Great, it's a great pleasure. After a considerable amount of work and a lot of cooperation from the and we've got a school research officer. Mike, if you could come up and chief. If she wants to take pictures, come on up, don't feel.
Boy, I have something to say. Mike, last time. Seth, yeah, oh, sorry.
Stop and turn around, come up closer, you can see something.
Um, one Zach, he always works together for a long time. Great officer, and now he's going to be a favorite source officer, school resource officer, he served the walls. Mike's kind of doing everything right now, finishes the mission for East Department. They did one office, he started this position and the energy, East Department is every day. They're here, I'm proud of them, good detective. So, with the department, working really hard on this position, excited about it, really excited to see what makes. Josh, where's the location? Yeah.
Alright, so that said, the next item on the agenda number four is also because we're very glad to welcome back to the stage. Set up down there. If you look up, it looks just like this picture of the wall.
I am, you are on. Real quick, before I start, I have slides, they'll go quickly, they'll be on the screen for three or four seconds each. So we don't worry about us taking a long time, but I would like to all be able to see.
So, check right there.
Yeah.
Guys, you are right out there.
Have a torch, get the lights, I'll start and please go around to me to a lot of scenes. First, thank you for letting me here this evening, I'll make it real clear what I'm trying to accomplish as the slide's going through. When I was 28 years old, I was on the American Bicentennial Commission for Schenectady County. It was a commission that they created with about, I don't know, there must have been between 20 and 30 of us on the group. They're all gone now, I'm the last remaining one, so I truly wanted to accomplish something before I joined you. This was Freedom Park. This is the land around Jumping Jacks. Owned by Jack Brennan, who owned Jumping Jacks at the time. When I was on the bicentennial commission, I was asked to go to Albany, I just don't even remember frankly, because at 28, I was too young. But I was age camped, commanding general with the 98th Division, and he was on the commission, he didn't want to go to Albany. So I went, and the meeting that I went to was to bring the New York State Bicentennial Barge to different sites from New York City to Buffalo. They were looking for locations, and the only location that I was aware of was that area along Shawnee Avenue. So, met with John Brennan, the owner, got him to agree to let us use the land during the bicentennial. In a relatively short time, I would say three months, Burt Master, myself, and the Corps of Engineers at Hillside Avenue moved soil from the Cushing stoneworks up on Second North Road down to Freedom Park, and that created the amphitheater. A lot of railroad ties from the Rotterdam Industrial Park, all donated material, all donated stone, all donated gravel. We had a crack crew of 12-year-olds and did a lot of work down there, got that amphitheater done in about two and a half months. Where the people came from, I'll never know, but Carlton Swayze Landscaping and Comedy agreed to put nice dark earth throughout the park and donate all the grass seed and cover, which had the grass growing in about three weeks. See, all the work was done. We planted something like 1,200 shrubs and trees there. All, again, paid for by the Schenectady County Bicentennial Commission, and I'll show you how they did it. Scotia Rotary Club built that stage that was there. Boy Scout, Cub Scout troops planted much of the material. Thirty-two garden clubs in Schenectady County planted flower beds, all true. Purpose of the park obviously was because the bicentennial barge was coming, it came for three days. Fifty thousand people were ushered onto the barge during those three days. The festival was seven days, we had well over 100,000 pretend events and goings. Hard to believe, but we put 3,000 chairs in the amphitheater. The Quaddis Club built picket tables, the Lions Club built the fence which you see around in front, and Amsterdam Farm built the bridge of the barge, again, free of charge, all donated labor. State of New York John Holchansky, vision of waterways brought the state barge in and drove pirates of the barge, we have something to do against. There we go. Also at that festival were craft tents and food tents, all of the circus pubs in the county got a chance to sell product at that fence, at that booth, and 50 jury craftsmen sold crafts at the other booths. We paid for it with this map the G E donated, they made 100,000 of them, we sold them for $2 a piece. And I brought one for each of you, I have one for the, the song cost of 200 now. Oh, wow. So that's the map, other projects where we sold square feet at Freedom Park for $5 to $100, depending on how many square feet of Freedom Park you wanted. Also, we made this book that is from Los Hanson. Finally, the bicentennial plate sold a lot of these and sold them out actually. All of this paid for it, there were no tax stoppers involved in anything we did that year. The two architects drew up plans, I have some to show you, this isn't one of them, but Richard Eats, who I believe is a Glendale architect, retired, and Floyd Barwick, who is also from Scotia. Part of this was to welcome the barge and put up the stage and have performances during the bicentennial. We did 12 hours of performances a day on that stage as people wound their way through the park and came. But more importantly, we put up six kiosks along Shawnee Avenue that all contained aluminum plates with ink imprinted into the aluminum, it was done by G E R and D, just the examples of, I'll show this one, yes. These were on the kiosks at Freedom Park, each kiosk had between six and eight of these plates. Unfortunately, they were peeled off, some of them, the kiosks rotted after 15 years or 20 years, and so they were taken down. They were a beautiful addition, not only to the park, but the history of the area. I better speed up. That's where it says sign there is the kiosk, and then the benches and the basement, the walking ones. That was donated by our Saratoga Mason. Our local folks, Carl Stuppi, directed the choir each night, we put on a show called About It For Americans, Seven performances that year with the New York City Opera Company star Roy singing, and that's running, chief, there goes the kiosk I mentioned. It was done as an Eagle Scout project by Bob Harrison, maybe a vice member of this project for that was secondly, his son did them as an Eagle Scout project. The old bridge, Schenectady, gorgeous in this painting. Bridge but remains, Washington Avenue in Scotia is, turns into Washington Avenue in Schenectady. I probably was 42 before I realized they met up, but that's the way it was. We put, the J C's built that cover, and in the center was a kiosk, and below the kiosk was a time capsule, built by Research and Development, sealed in an argon chamber made of something called schenectadium, and filled with objects from 1976. So that's, that was the bridge of Buckman again, and I wish it lasted longer, it was very attractive when it was built. Speed this up, oops, that's a good one. One more section and that will bring you to the, what I came for. Yeah, the kiosks all along the way, they started pre-revolution when the Native Americans were the only ones here in town. And we proceeded up to the bridge of Buckman by 100 years each time, and went into the transportation, the riverboats, the Erie Canal, the trains that were built in Schenectady, the transportation, and then below it was the time capsule. Give me to turn this so quickly, I want to just show you the variety of things that are on that, the Edison Steinets, the map of Schenectady County. Wampum Belts. The, I believe he was a governor of New York State, I already forget. Oh, I'm going to keep that one up while I quickly talk to you, there's the old bridge, it's built in, I believe, 1803, is that someone correctly? The covered bridge on Washington Avenue, built in 1808, was torn down in 1874. Steel bridge was put up in its place, and everyone, you gotta move this along. Get the lights on again. I am anxious that we probably tore what was lost to the park sometime in New York. My son is here to see me, and I'm bringing him up again because babysitter became a marketing and moved to New York City and opened this firm called Quiet Men. He aims to draw something up, we'll show you something that we figured out. His name is John Semeron, you might know Cliff Semeron, his dad, long time ago. Honestly, it's brilliant. It's highly respected, if you watch the Super Bowl, you've seen many of his ads on the Super Bowl. John came up with this design because I asked him to do something that would last, and these are concrete pillars that would have the photo history of the county on. I would hope to do four to seven of these kiosks, and I'm out soliciting drawings and also affirm to do it. I think I've identified one here in Scotia that is highly skilled with this. So, that's not upside down, the thing in the center is a bench, and that is directly over the time capsule stand. I am convinced that if we don't do something, that time capsule will remain there for several hundred years because nobody's going to find it. So, are there any questions?
A lot of your, a lot of your pictures, I go through a lot of our targets, because that's what I worked there. Which you add, I think you said Paul, we got a lot of stuff there, pictures and stories of the other week about how you guys put up Freedom Park and you did all the work for it, it's pretty interesting, it's got all the old pictures, all the old pictures.
I wish I had. Barbara Sen, who was a local girl, took over a thousand slides during the bicentennial of progress of the park through the
Well, it's absolutely been fast, put it together.
Yeah, yeah, this got a few, so, pictures, but so anyway, I'm going to get those to the history center and hopefully they can find the projector, because the hardest thing about this so far was finding the slide which I
So, that was back to the point.
Yes.
How, please go from here to get that. Finding us to, to
I need to meet with the firm to see about what it would cost to do this, this I have to start. But I've already been given two pledges of funds to go towards this, and a local institution and also a local man. So, I started raising the funds for it, but I really would like to have your thoughts on it.
Dennis, I just want to thank you, you know, growing up here in Scotia, I recognize my music teacher and I'm friends with, with John, so it brings back a lot of memories. So you did a wonderful presentation, brings back a lot of great memories here growing up in Scotia, so thank you very much.
Carl Stuppi did an incredible job again at the park, so, he's fine.
Ralph did a lot of the photographs.
He did.
Yeah, I can think that much, I think, uh, two factors, that was a big topic, because of the Christmas. Like your folks, I gotta go by Peter, it's a park hall.
Love to see.
I found one that actually showed the blueprint of Collins Park. And that was, they put together.
Mayor Madden, if, if I, if I could just say thank you for that presentation, when I joined the Freedom Park Board many, many, many years ago, the first name that was drilled into my head from someone I needed to meet and appreciate was, was Mayor Madden. And for a while, your name was just the fixture on the back of Freedom Park, so it was a pleasure to, to run into you before the meeting, and it was, it was really special for me to see that. In terms of your monument, I think it's important, and you know, if it's my understanding, when we were talking about the new Trailhead Park, in the park plan was already an area for an over, a monument on the, what we're going to call an overlook pass on the foot of the old Burr Bridge. So, in my, my honest opinion, your, your concept, your idea is something that fits in, in a park plan that's been developed, and I, I would personally fully support you in this effort, and I would encourage the village to find a way to be involved as well. But also, it's important for village residents as well as New Yorkers to recognize history. And you know, there's an opportunity for us to share the unique history of Scotia, going back to the fact that we currently reside on lands of the indigenous Mohawk. And that's a story in our village history we oftentimes do not tell. And the story that you told me about when they dredged Collins Lake, and they found hundreds of sinkers and thousands of sinkers from the Mohawk tribes that inhabited the area around, around Collins Lake, I think I can think of no better way than to monument, monetize, you know, their presence here, their history here, but even the history going, going forward, and asking in this monument, what's next for the next 200 years for the villages of Scotia and Schenectady County and New York State.
I should have mentioned that the plaques that I showed you, two of Larry Park, John Cap, who was the Rotterdam historian, Wayne Carthy, who was president of the Historical Society and also a Glendale resident. You all involved in picking out which images would be displayed, so a lot of thought needed to, I won't talk there yet. Thank you, Justin.
A lot of people don't know, uh, my call back, that's actually the record forward with the generation to look back to their lives, people's life, I forgot to hold their stuff, put it down, really, I'm sorry to get you that or like maybe some areas, because I'm like, Scott, through the papers, I can see the blueprint, this and that, there's big things. I've had a lot of people follow that, like the Star Crisis, that is new generation, pictures of our partners.
So, it sounds like you have support from the board, kind of the but, oh, for, I guess, a concrete, as it were.
I'd love to have those back if you're
Yep.
These all came from the Historical Society.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kudos on finding a Kodak projector.
Smogris Chises, another former mayor, Will's projector.
Show that to my daughter, she might have to go to the museum to see another one. I showed her an overhead projector the other day, from, from school where they used to place the clear sheets on there, and she was like, why would you have that? That, exactly.
Thanks again, Mayor Madden, so, I have number five, I'm close to the fourth.
Hi, I'm Amanda Gonzalez Barone, I live at Six North Home Street. I would just like the board to consider, please, providing regular updates regarding the municipal facilities project. It's been about two months now since the vote took place, and there's been no public updates or status regarding the progress, if there is any. I, even if there isn't progress, I'd love to see a regular standing agenda item on the meeting agendas, even just say there's no progress, almost like the committee reports have. Even just say there's no progress, almost like the committee reports have been. We as residents are stakeholders in this project and I think it's responsible to keep us updated on on the goings on. I'd even recommend, if possible, it'd be nice to have a dedicated webpage on the website to provide updates, kind of like the Downtown Connections website. I know with that project, I found that personally very helpful in understanding the project better. So I think it'd be great just for people asking questions because I know that, you know, they're already starting to ask questions and just being able to have a resource to point to would, you know, be very helpful as a as a resident. Thank you for your consideration.
Hey. I think you're quite right. Is there anybody else who'd like to be heard a privilege?
Good evening to the village board of trustees. Just move this up here. My name's Alexander Burns. That's my husband, Mark Pequart, who are residents of the Irving Road. I think the guy that got promoted left, but congratulations to him or for his police promotion. And thank you for the history lessons there on Freedom Park. We actually got married there. So it's I never knew any of that history and that was really cool to to be here to to learn that. So anyway. So I guess back to the matter of why I'm here tonight. We're here to light tonight to bring to light our village's response to a recent code complaint. The entire process has left us dismayed and quite frankly bewildered. As you are all aware, we have a difficult situation with our neighbor. On March 31st, she installed a fence on our property because she believed that we were trying to steal her land. We were not. On June 1st, we reported two code violations to the villages Scotia. One was for the placement of my neighbor's roof fence and another for overgrown grass. In response to our complaint, code enforcement told us that he would not cite either violation. On our fence complaint, code enforcement stated he would continue to use his 10 year old fence policy instead of the new fence law. He did not believe that he needed to follow the new law as he believed it closely mirrored his old policy. On the matter of the grass complaint, he admitted the grass was in violation, but refused to cite the owner. His reasoning for this was that she could not maintain that grass without trespassing on our property, which we are not allowing her to do. She chose to put her fence in a location where she could not maintain her property without trespassing. Unhappy with code enforcement's response, we reengaged with our elected officials. Just about every one of you has had a chance to listen to our concerns and weigh in on the matter. So we reengaged with all of you to help us understand why the new fence law wasn't being enforced. The sitting board had just passed this law last year. We also wanted to make it clear that we could not permit this neighbor to trespass. She had already put a strict no trespass policy in place between the properties and has utilized the Scotia Police to enforce this policy on us. From here, there was infighting with members of the board and the mayor. Trustee Rizzo, the author of the law, told us that our neighbor's fence was in violation. He had reviewed the law with the village attorney when it was proposed and written. Therefore, he was confused on why no citation had been issued by code enforcement. On the other hand, the mayor responded that this is a stupid law and he didn't know why he voted for it. Following the author of the law's comment, trustee Rizzo, the defense violated the local law. We continued to push for answers on why the code was not being enforced. After visiting our home, the mayor met with the chief of police and building inspector. He provided us the following resolution. As long as we deny our neighbor access to perform the maintenance, the village will not enforce the requirement that she maintain it. The village considers this type of vinyl fence as close to maintenance free as you are going to get and will not require a two foot setback suggested in our code. I'd like to point out the code does not suggest that. It states it clearly. It states shall. The mayor continued, on the other side of the equation, if our neighbor is unable or refuses to move her fence, the village will not entertain a claim of trespass if we maintain the area between the property line and the fence or clean the fence from time to time. To summarize, our village passed a law unanimously by this sitting board and is now refusing to enforce it as written. The village has chosen to ignore their own law and follow a preferred policy instead. To make matters worse, the village is asking us to put ourselves in legal and financial liability by trespassing on and maintaining our neighbor's property despite her clear objection. She is under an intense false belief that we are trying to steal her land. We are not. As the attorney, as the entire board, the village attorney, chief of police and code enforcement have had the opportunity to weigh in on this matter, we consider the village's decision final. Permit lawlessness rather than enforce the law as written. Let me repeat that. The village's decision is final. Permit lawlessness rather than enforce the law as written. Permit trespassing rather than cite violations of the code. Allowing me to speak.
Susan Turelli had her hand raised. If anybody else would like to be heard a privilege.
Yes, I would like to speak.
Susan, go ahead.
Okay, Susan Turelli, 26 Sunnyside Road. I think my complaint is very similar to Alex's complaint in that it is in regards to a code violation that's not being enforced. It has to do with the code 104-9 poultry and fowl, which no person shall keep, house or maintain any poultry or fowl in the village within 300 feet of any dwelling other than that occupied by him. So I know there has been previous discussions on the meetings regarding chickens and ducks. However, there's been no changes to the code to date. And recently someone moved to the area on Knickerbocker and inquired about having ducks. And from what they said, they said that they talked to the mayor and were told that they needed to talk to their neighbors to make sure it was okay and that it was okay. And now they have ducks. So I'm asking the village to enforce their codes as they're written and not tell people that it's okay when it's not. Again, it seems like it seems like code enforcement is a ongoing issue at this point. And I think we need to address that.
That's not the conversation that was had at all, but if you would like to make a formal complaint, we'll take it at that.
Okay, there's a house on Knickerbocker that has ducks. That's my formal complaint.
But I need name and address of parties.
Okay, I will email that to you.
If anybody else would like to be heard a privilege. Proposed privileges for. Item number six. Somebody like to introduce the law 22D. Water course.
Mayor Scotia, I'd like to, Mayor Gifford, I'd like to introduce proposed local law 22D regarding water course protection and to set a public hearing for the next regular meeting of the board of trustees on September 14th, 2022 at 7:00 PM.
You have a second?
I'll second.
You have a call roll?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Item number seven. Somebody like to introduce the law 222E.
I'd like. Mayor Gifford, I'd like to introduce proposed local law 2022E regarding the construction replacement of sidewalks. And to set a public hearing for the next regular meeting of the board of trustees, September 14th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. I'll second that motion. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Use of ARPA funding to the amount of 35,385 to be appropriated to the Washington Avenue sidewalk project grant, which I believe is a match, a grant match.
I'll second.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Call roll.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Item nine. Resolution or motion to approve the street closure of Fifth Street.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize a closure of Fifth Street between Vliro and Huston Street on Saturday, September 17th from 12. I'll second that motion. From 12:00 PM until 7:00 PM for the Village Tavern, Biscos Pizza and a little block party which are my neighbors.
May I have a I have a question for the police chief? It's come to my, it's been kind of a known thing that overconsumption has become an issue at Village Tavern over the last six to eight months. Is there proper oversight in place to ensure that this block party will be safe and that overconsumption will not be an issue?
And noise. Thank you, chief.
Do you have a second?
I'll second. Or I think trustee Rizzo's second.
All pay.
Aye.
Item number 10. I was hoping to be able to have a motion on this one, but it didn't work out that way. So this is having to do with the sidewalk from Sealy Street to the edge of the high school property, 120 feet of overgrown asphalt. Been an embarrassment for a long time. I would, I talked to the school. I would like to propose that we start again. I talked to the school. They are in agreement if we are, and I'd like to talk to you guys tonight about doing that. If we split the cost of that sidewalk, they'll pay for half and we could pay for half. They would like us to be the prime contractor. And that's because they've had some trouble dealing with the state and I think we'd be able to do that better. Do you know why the state cares? It's going to be a whole lot better.
Do you have a number? Did you have an expense number on this?
So I've gotten, I've been working on three estimates. I've got two. I don't, it's one of them's around $10,000, one's around $20,000. And I've got a third one that was to have on Friday. Which is why we can't really do this tonight.
Have you seen the plans for the for work that's going on out there? Because I thought I saw them digging sidewalk and that's it.
They put in the corner and the sidewalk along the school has been laid the whole way and it's gorgeous. But the school did that on their own. And we have a quote from the contractor who did that for the school. So I think we're well on our way. I'd like to propose to take that out of the paving budget, but Brian tells me that if we do that, that's fine. But we'll likely run into having to borrow from Peter when we get to the end of the paving project this year for these folks. So we can back down down the road and do it that way. But anyway. I hope to have this, the three bits in place and we can talk about this at the work session.
So there's only, personally, we need safe routes to school. And right now with that sidewalk, the way it is, there's no accessible safe way for a lot of village residents walking to the high school to get there. I also frequently walk that that neighborhood at night and it's quite harrowing at night with 18 year old trucks and whatnot. And it only seems right to complete the work that the school district is doing. The only concern that I have is winter time. The that that sidewalk that is existing there is never snowblowed, shoveled or maintained. And it is village ordinance that it is the property owner's responsibility to snow blow and remove snow and deice that sidewalk. The village of Scotia cannot, as we found out with our business district, shovel or remove snow from that snow block, so that sidewalk in accordance to the New York State Constitution. So my question is, long term, how is that sidewalk going to be maintained going forward once we construct the sidewalk?
So I will talk to the school about that. I assume they're going to maintain the sidewalk in front of their place.
But it's not in front of the school. It's in front of a home. It's owned.
But I mean, I assume they're going to go, when they just put the sidewalk they just put in. And I would hope that they will agree to come down to the corner, turn it around and go back. So let's see if they'll do that.
And that doesn't violate New York State gift gift law in the New York State Constitution?
I don't know. Yeah, I don't know or care.
I think we should clarify that just so we don't have any problems going forward.
I mean, the other option is that we make the homeowner do it. But it would certainly make more sense and be better if the school did it in the morning when they did theirs. It would make it easier for them to turn around and be done.
And what if the school district opts not to do that because they opted, yeah, they opted not to remove snow to the new sidewalk from Broad Street to Sacagawea because it was on private property? So I before we before we allocate that, I I think I'd like a memorandum of understanding or a written letter from the from the school district saying that they will, if the property owner is not going to remove snow, that they will. Because the village cannot in accordance with the constitution. And what good is a sidewalk if half, six months out of the year, it's not maintained? And then also, when that sidewalk deteriorates, who is responsible for replacing that sidewalk?
I don't have an answer for either of those. It matters at this point, but.
I'm still trying to picture 146 Sealy is mid block.
So it's right on the corner of Sealy. It's literally a dirt path. It used to be an asphalt sidewalk, which was out of code, but the village didn't cause the state, which I guess when the the road was actually built, the state put in that sidewalk, if I understand correctly.
So it's from Sealy, not 146.
Correct. It's from.
Sealy towards the high school property.
Yes.
Okay, this just was written wrong on the agenda.
So item 11, Mayor's comments to the board. You have the answer. You're concerned you can do that here. And you could figure out a way to post that. We've had two meetings so far with the architects and engineers for the building project that's moving along. There's nothing kind of pre in place yet. There. What what we've done so far is set out a timeline. Which I should probably post. But it. Docs have been, so next week we'll have a meeting with the more specifically with the architects. talks about, so next week we'll have a meeting with, more specifically with the architects to try to figure out, or start figuring out what those were. And we're gonna have a meeting, a different meeting to talk to the money people about when we're starting the bonding process and that. It's moving along, the, the hope is to get, start digging in the spring and have everything in place before that. Well, just, so that, that's, it's, it's moving along, but there's nothing to see. The other item that's particularly clear in my head right now is that, you see the pile of phones over here on the desk? They weren't really there for display and some of the stuff into the other room. But last Friday, we had a, a power failure in this whole part of the world. Several blocks on either side, I have not heard what caused it or why. But when the power came back on, we had lost all the phones on this floor. Internet, my, my desktop computer it has its power supply blown out. And all the routers, the computer routers from here to the fire station, which there's, I think four or five. I don't know how it did it, but there was a router in here that wasn't transmitting the internet. One in the owner's office, one over the fire station, and one in the chief's office over there. Don't work anymore. So we have a, probably what will be a large insurance claim in the works, a number of phones and over incredible amount of time. We had our, both our phone representative and our computer representative, we were saying, it's your problem, it's your problem. But they finally got together and worked pretty well and got it done. So just, just today, from last Friday, we got internet at the fire station. They were, they do a lot of their stuff on internet. I kind of heard about it a little bit.
Does that pose a safety risk? Is there backup wifi or backup power for the, the firehouse currently until we have the new facility built?
There, there's certainly backup power, they have power. But we don't have backup internet and the internet wasn't working because everything from here to there was fried and we didn't have an alternative. And there's nothing here that's on the generator anyway, so the router, none of the routers along the way would work even if they weren't burnt out because it didn't have power.
So is there a, as we're looking at, this is something maybe to bring back to the municipal facilities committee to look at that as the new buildings being constructed? To make sure that our firefighters don't lose access to internet during an outage like this?
I, I think that's one of the aspects of hardening the building.
Do we, do we lose any information?
No, it's that, well, I mean, I can't get at my computer and stuff, I need, but besides that, they tell me they'll be able to get that. Item twelve.
So you, you heard, congratulations to Officer, now Officer Detective Peckham, who is our community resource officer. It's a, it's a position well done on behalf of the chief and a great hire. And he's gonna be a great addition to the mission of the police department, which is growing more and more closely aligned to meeting community need. You know, just to give residents a sense of what he's been up to, the position actually began in early July. And there's been eleven investigations related to, related to the community resource officer. And so far, four of those investigations opened this month have already been closed. And seven being actively addressed and investigated. He also has been out and about, walking around the, the community. And he's actually done ten walking beats and he's visited nearly all the local businesses to connect with business owners on Mohawk Ave. And in the area, and I know after, you know, last summer of, you know, some incidences taking place in parking lots and, and entrances out in front of businesses. I think this is a, a welcome, a welcome addition on behalf of our bid businesses as well. But that also includes beats in the park and other areas where our youth hang out. So there's been some great positive interactions. On Saturday, this past Saturday, Scotia Police Department, sponsored by Marshall Sterling, did a car safety seat check right over in the Marshall Sterling parking lot. They also handed out bike helmets, which was welcome by, by a couple of residents who came to pick up helmets. And there looked to be a pretty, have a pretty nice line for car seat checks as well. At the last board meeting, I brought up that, an after-action report surrounding the department's actions after the assault that the fireworks took place. Officer and Detective Peckham completed a seven-page after-action report. So there, that'll be a great learning tool for, and used as a training tool to help improve the department's response to serious events, especially mass. You know, the other thing that seems to be, you know, coming through on a lot of our, our police reports is our domestic incidences. You know, and, and our police officers are responding really well to these domestic incidences. And also taking the opportunity to evaluate the suspects and make sure that they get access to the healthcare they might need. There's been a couple incidences this month, two in, two in particular, where suspects were referred to Ellis Hospital. So again, I think that shows our department's commitment to our police reform and accountability plan and keeping residents safe, as well as those who might be in, in a, a mental distress or emotional distress. So along those lines, I reported last month also that Detective Peckham, you know, he graduated from the E S R O school. So as we come back next month, back to school month, you know, Officer Peckham will be an added presence in our schools working alongside the Glenville Resource Officer that, that will also be, also be present. I think this is a, a huge win for village residents. Because what we will find is that Officer Peckham's response to school, in-school complaints will be able to be followed up with a little bit more closely with actually having a Scotia Police Officer present in the neighborhood where the, the students may live. And then lastly, to, the department will be sending two additional members to active shooter training school in August. So this month we'll have two additional officers highly trained to be able to respond to active shooter instances, a variety of different scenarios within school, out of school, at community events, and things of that nature. So that, that again is, is a good, a good way. And I want to thank the board and the village for continuing to support the training line that is allowing us to support our officers.
And the sincere hopefully we never have.
Yes. But, you know, plan for the worst and hope for the best is, you know, first responder, first responder mantra. And lastly, I want to also commend, again, Officer Peckham for responding and investigating the child learning case that happened here in the, in the village. Within twenty-four, forty-eight hours of receiving the complaint, the individual responsible was taken into custody and charged. You know, this is a, a situation, you know, that as a parent is something that sits with me. And to know that when our children are walking to school, returning to school, or walking to the park, you know, that they're, they'll be safe is something that's important. So, so thank you to Officer Peckham, as well as to the entire Scotia Police Department for that. I don't have anything currently to report for the Business Improvement District, other than encouraging residents to enjoy our walkable streets this time. You know, whether it's you're enjoying a, a nice coffee from, from Story Coffee, a burger at Jumpin' Jack's, a beer over at Mohawk Tap Room, sushi or, or lunch at Scotia Diner, or, or Jade Bistro, be sure to get out there and support. And then if you're also to keep, just kind of in, in positive vibes and, and to say hi to All In Aesthetics as she opens up her new location after moving from the, the building displaced from the enlarged Stewart's. So with that, that is all I have to report.
I just want to expand on the Community Resource Officer and Trustee Cook, thank you for that information. The Police Reform Committee will be meeting in the fall on September thirteenth at six P M. There are some members of that committee here present today and we have a great group. And you know, the, the focus, you mentioned the active shooter, we're in good shape with that training. So I want to thank Chief Harrigan. Also, with regards to the Community Resource Officer position, we've spent a lot of time, even when I was the liaison, speaking about that. And it's nice to see the implementation and moving forward with regards to that position. So good luck to Officer Peckham. And I hope that continues. I know we have a one-year contract with the school and thank you to the school for coordinating that and realizing and fulfilling that need to, for the Scotia schools. I do hope that continues. So I'll leave that in Chief Harrigan's hands after the first year. And I'm sure that's going to be successful and I think it's much needed. With regards to report from the town, I just want to remind everyone, Thursdays in the Park, it is continuing. August eighteenth, Nimbus, August twenty-fifth, Rhythm Pilots, September first, West Side Drive. And those are in Indian Meadows. And with regards to Melwack Park, August twenty-seventh, Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory. I did have a brief conversation with supervisor, with Supervisor Ketsley. And he indicated that Councilman Godluzki and himself may have something special with regards to movie night. So I might have to make a special appearance supervisor, just to see the outcome of that. Also, I am going to have a meeting with Supervisor with regards to some Glenville updates next week, so I'll report back. I also would like to thank him with coordinating with regards to the youth program in Scotia that's open for the Scotia residents as well as Glenville. It's a long, long time coming, it's overdue. We're gonna try to go ahead and implement more youth programs in the future. I did speak with the mayor before this meeting. We have too, the filmmaking, as well as the ecology. It's a one-week program, it's open to sixth grade to twelfth grade. And we have about nine students this week. They meet at the Lions Pavilion, a Schahery River Organization does provide snack and water and it's a brown bag lunch. And it's an all-day affair. They have the tour of the entire park and they're having a great time. And I received a lot of positive feedback and I hope that program expands. With regards to the ecology, I think there's about eight Scotia Glenville students that are signed up. There's definitely more room, if you could visit the site, if you're interested, Schahery River Organization. And I'm sure they'll welcome any new students, they'll, I think they're maxed about twenty children. So thank you, John McKeeby, for that program. And I'm very happy that that has at least started. The town and, and the village really worked for almost a year to try to implement something. So thank you, Town of Glenville, for your efforts and Schahery River Organization for at least having the ability to offer that to our community. With regards to report from the Fire Department, I did have a meeting with Chief Wood. Thank you for your time. The two positive things for this month is we did pass the purchase of a utility truck, which was much needed after the chief didn't even think that, that truck was gonna pass inspection. So the timing and the need and the use of ARPA funds really was able to come at a perfect time. So I want to thank the board to recognize the need. And Chief Wood, you did your due diligence to try to secure a vehicle that wasn't, you know, top, it was top of the line for our needs, but the cost wasn't top of the line. And, and we really, I, I commend you because you did a great job. So hopefully that truck will receive it next week, it's being outfitted right now. And so that will be a, a nice addition to the fleet. So we're all set, now we just need a firehouse to go ahead and put it in, right? With regards to the firehouse, the, as the mayor had mentioned, Chief Wood is going to be touring some stations next week and looking at fire plans. And just a reminder, you know, they're gonna obviously do what they can on the square footage, it's just under fourteen thousand, including the upstairs and downstairs. So it's a really exciting time for them. And we look forward to seeing this, this wonderful project, long overdue project progress. So congratulations on that. I just, I, I also want to thank the Parks Department. It's looking great, I'm out there almost every day, early in the morning. So Archie and the crew, the, there's a lot of garbage that's, has to be picked up. And by, I don't know, almost seven o'clock every day, the park is looking pretty good. I ran into the mayor, we were actually walking one day several weeks back. But the guys work, they work so hard. And you know, I, I don't know, I, maybe we take it for granted that when we go to the park, it should be clean, right? There's enough garbage cans to fill up the waste that's there. So you guys do a great job and I just want to say thank you. And Archie probably hears my dog barking, so he knows I'm there probably by six thirty, seven o'clock every day. I just want to thank all the departments and all the employees as well that work so hard in the village. And you do a great job and I know, I appreciate it. And I see someone that I met earlier today with regards to another business, Upstate CBD, as well as the Smoke Shop in Scotia. And he came here today and it, it's great to see the community here at, at the village board meeting. So thank you for stopping by. That's all I have to report, thanks, I hope everybody's having a great summer.
Okay, I got a couple things to report. Unfortunately, the Special Events Committee meeting for the car show to put a, a final note on that. And also, starting on the holiday on the avenue, will probably be sometime next week because everybody's been away and they're finally coming back. So we're gonna have two meetings and put the rest, put the rest one and start the other. The other item I have is, we wanted to thank Brian for keeping things running smooth, especially on Sagadaga, where there, where there's been a lot of work and you guys have been kind of keeping things moving around, along with the state, Callahan's people. I, I want to say also that the boat traffic in the village docks has been pretty good during the summer. We've, I talked to a number of captains and vessels, we had a forty-footer parked back there a couple of weeks ago. And he spent three days here in the village. And he said, he's actually been talking to a couple of his friends that have also cruised the Mohawk and Hudson, that it's a well-word stop to come in and visit the Village of Scotia and hang around for a couple of days. So it's just really worth while. And then, and the boat traffic is increasing because we have a, a perfect spot. We have the village here open up to all the boaters, for restaurants, banks, and drugstores, which they love, it's all in walking distance. So our boat traffic is increasing and I hope to maybe next year, bring them some more information down there to keep the boat traffic going. So that's all I have to report this month.
There was no planning board meeting this, this month, so there wasn't anything to report from there. To expand on. Um to expand on what the mayor said about the facilities project, it's a and to kind of say, you know, commentally, it's 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 exciting for the Fire Department, but this is an exciting time for the village. And we, this is a very, very long overdue project for our employees, our first responders and all of the people involved with the village. It's a, you know, another example today of the phones getting affected by electricity from from a storm. I at my house had some weird things going on with my home security too, but it's, you know, it it it's just a, it's long overdue that these updates and upgrades are for our employees and first responders. So you know, and and just a little bit more of a definition of what's going on that there's a pricing and bidding going on for the geotechnical surveys they need to do to finalize the structure for the for the firehouse. Ongoing, there will be a schematic design and discovery here in this building for asbestos and all the things that they need to put final numbers to it. Um I'm just going through the notes. I wasn't able to attend this past week's meeting because uh silly day job gets in the way. Um but uh all of the things that need to happen to have exact numbers as we move into the you know, bond anticipation notes for financing, the the meeting. Uh next week, we will be having our financial team there for the grant writing and the financial professionals that we've seen before. Um you know, I'm just scanning through the notes from here again. It's just a, it's it's an exciting time. There is, there are things going on. And that's the goal is to beginning in twenty-three to be um out to bid for the project. So. I personally am very pleased to be involved and see what's going on. So and you know, to answer your question, yeah, once we have once we have a little bit more to say, I think, you know, it that's a great place to have. There's a link on the website. Here's what's going on with this and the mayor and um and I can update as well. Um I think that's it for me, other than the fact I find it amazing that there's such a conflict between neighbors at times. I just don't have that that much. I'm not a bad person to be a neighbor of them, I think. I mean, it's just amazing how there's so many conflicts at times. So.
He's aren't too glad you have an alley between them.
Well, even.
I mean, if a chicken was between, I don't know, that might be another story.
Uh but yeah, it's exciting to see all the things going on in the village. Even the work on Saginaga Road, even though it delayed me a little bit today, it's great to see all the improvements going on. You know, that like you said, Ryan, to the mayor about that paving budget, that's a consistent thing that you don't see at every other. Even in through the pandemic, we still had progress on paving and street improvement. It's a, it's good to see the things that uh necessarily go unseen. Thank you.
Uh item thirteen, departmental reports.
I would like to uh thank the department heads for sending their monthly reports in. We appreciate their hard work on it.
Um I'll make a motion to accept the department reports. I'll make a motion to make the budget budget adjustments um for the month of July.
I'll second. I make that motion?
I'll second. One item I just want to bring up for future consideration with e-bikes becoming very popular in communities like the village, uh I think it's important that the Village of Scotia find ways to increase education um for parents and riders on e-bike safety, uh particularly when in the road and when uh and and that helmets are something that should be strongly encouraged. Um a National Traffic Safety Board report, um you know, kind of outlines the increases in uh serious head injuries and 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 deaths relate relating to e-bikes. Um and I know for myself, I I am seeing a lot around. Um New York has plenty of existing regulation, but I think we as a community need to make sure that we have training and education in place.
So be it. Hi.
Hi. Thank you, everyone.